It's six thirty eight. We're gonna start this meeting of the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust Fund. For Tuesday, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Through thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two revised order. Extending remote participation by all members. In a meeting of a public body, this meeting in the Great Barrington Affordable Housing Trust will be conducted via remote participation. To the greatest extent possible. Specific information, general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. And all parties with a right or a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen may also do so. Through technical means. See the instructions at the top of the posted agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access. Access the proceedings in real time via technological meetings. All votes will be. Roll call votes. And. Let me just see, Joe method is here now.
It looks like John, John Katz is too.
Yes, he is. Um, so members of the. Affordable Housing Trust that are attending are Bill Cook, Ananda Payne, Garfield Reed. Joe method, John Katz. Krieger. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. And myself, Fred Clark. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. This meeting is being recorded.
Yeah, there you go.
And, uh, welcome Carol Bosco Baumann. The, um. We have a couple of housekeeping things to do. I'd like to. Take care of the meeting minutes from the October eighteenth. Meeting, uh, first, if everybody's had a chance to review them. Have any questions or changes? If not, can we get it a, a, a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes. From October. I've said it.
Okay, um, this is a roll call vote, so we'll start it. Uh, Ananda. Yes.
Dane.
abstain. Bill.
Yes.
Yes. Krieger. Vote yes. Joe method.
Uh, yes.
Yes, and Garfield Reed.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So unanimous with one abstention. Uh, so the minutes are approved. Thank you. We still are behind on one ma- meeting minute. And we hope to get caught up, uh, soon. Um, Carol is here to, uh. Present and talk to us about the, um. Requested, uh, CDC, so the Berkshire is doing to, um. Buy the, what's the building that's known as the marble block on Main Street and, um. Uh, I'd like to, you know, go ahead and, and, and do that. First, uh, Ananda, you have your hand up. Do you want to be recognized?
Uh, yes, thank you. I just wanna, I just was reviewing the agenda and it looks like it's a bit longer than I think we could probably fit in tonight. So I was going to ask if it would make sense for us to prioritize some items on the agenda.
I think that's a good point. Um, I, when I put the agenda together, I tend. To be a little conservative about what we can get through in an hour and a half. The reason is, uh, under the open meeting law, we need to take a good chance, a good. The best guess we can about what it could be covered, but, um. Uh, I think we're. Fairly, we, we have a guest, so I want to prioritize her presentation. Um. And a couple of the other things that are on the agenda, uh, I think are gonna be fairly quick. Um, so. We can take them in order or pass them over as, as you, as you prefer. Okay. And with, why don't we? Um, so let me just say, what I anticipate happening tonight. Is that we will hear from Carol about the CDC's. Proposal for the, um, marble block. And I would like if we could vote on, uh, her request tonight. Uh, the time is a bit critical because they need to close in January. Excuse me. Um, the reason that I put the draft annual budget in there is. I'm sure the members will have questions about whether we can afford. To do, uh, what we're, what we're being asked to do. And so that really, uh, I'm in my mind are tied together. And then the North Plain Road and Grove Street are simple updates. They shouldn't take long. Similarly with the, uh, Community Preservation Act. Application. I doubt that we'll get to dealing with the eighty-two tiny house, uh, tonight, and I would prefer to put that off. Um, and. So without, uh, any additional, I'd like to turn it over to Carol and, um. Carol, I've shared your proposal with the members and, uh, I'm sure they've. Had a chance to look through it. Can you tell us what you're looking for and, uh, what you'd like to do? Just maybe briefly summarize what you're thinking, what, what, what CDC is thinking.
Thank you all for, uh, for prioritizing consideration of this. Opportunity given the short timeline. Uh, we, we jumped at the chance to, to put in a bid on the building and we're delighted when they accepted our bid. Because we knew about the eight apartments that exist in that building. Uh, those are, are what are called naturally occurring affordable housing units. Those are primarily people who work in Great Barrington, so it's people who work at. Local restaurants, uh, grocery stores. Uh, et cetera, and other businesses in town. And, uh, we, we knew that. That the opportunity to develop that would be of interest to many. Uh, real estate has been a hot commodity in our community, so we were delighted when they accepted our offer. And, um. This is a, this is a big lift for the CDC. We're excited to be able to, uh, to do this and to be considered, um. By the Affordable Housing Trust for your support. Uh, it's, it's important to us that we, that we secure and stabilize the rents. In the building and we mean not only the, the residential rents, but we're also interested in the success of the commercial tenants as well. And, and, uh, we're interested in having everyone stay. So in the proposal, uh, we outlined that we've asked the town for investment. And that we thought a fair way to, to deal with, should we be fortunate enough to receive any investment. A grant from the town that we would assign a, um, a restriction to a particular unit. That would be aligned with the affordability guidelines, uh, for example, with the Affordable Housing Trust. We know that the funds coming from CPA should be, uh, up to a hundred thousand, I mean, a hundred percent. Of, uh, of area median income. And that falls right in line with what is called workforce housing. And the, the, the range for typical workforce housing is, uh, for folks who can, who, uh, make sixty to a hundred and twenty percent. Of the area median income, which right now is ninety-two thousand, one hundred dollars, so. Uh, so that's how we propose to handle any investment would be to have a deed restriction placed on a particular unit. Should the trust be able to, uh, invest in it and, uh, and that way it would be restricted as such. And, and any investment the town makes, there would be a particular restriction attached to it. So CPA is at, is at a hundred percent of AMI, but there, you know, different, uh, funding. Uh, sources have different numbers, so ARPA, for example, is at sixty-five percent of AMI. Um. So we are, uh, we have, we have contracted to close on the building, January twenty-third. We've been fundraising for it. We've had some, some great support from the community, large and small donors. And they are specifically interested in helping to preserve this building. Um, it's. It, um. Did everyone have a chance to go through the proposal? And do you have any questions that I can answer at this point? I know, I know you have a detailed agenda and I don't, I don't want to take up too much time. Going through the proposal if you've already looked at it, but of course, for the benefit of those members of the public who are attending, I'm also happy to answer questions. If that's part of the protocol.
I have, I have a question. Uh. How is fundraising going? Do you have funds committed yet from other sources?
Uh, we do. We do. We have some anonymous sources. That have committed funds and then we have a number of members of the community. Who have given a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, um, so we are, uh, we're pleased with the, the response so far. Um.
Can you see how much has been raised to date or committed to date? And, um, I'll mute because my dog is barking, but, uh, Fred, I see Eric Bruin also has his hand up.
Yeah, we're gonna go through the panelists first.
Um. So, um. We've, let's see. We've, well, we've raised, we've raised about. Ten thousand dollars just from community members. Um, and, you know, we are asking the town for an investment of the ARPA funds in that. And should the town and the trust be able to invest funds in this endeavor? Then we will, we've been going through a quiet phase of the campaign right now where. You know, as with a typical capital campaign, there would be a quiet phase where you speak with larger donors. So we're also doing that and, and I don't have, uh, I don't have the details on those types of larger commitments yet, but. Once that we get commitment from the town itself, which, you know, as we know, town funds trigger. The, in the leverage other funds, so we can leverage funds. Um, you know, we, we, the town's investment in this would mean that, that the community understands the importance of it. And sees that the town is. Um. Is investing in its future. And that also creates some excitement and, and it would, it'll help us get to the goal that we need. In order to secure the down payment and then. In January, we roll out a, um, a more broad campaign, but right now. Those conversations are happening one-on-one and, uh. And, and in the background.
Well, Carol, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that because, uh, in your conversations with me and, and with others. I think you've stressed how important it is. Uh, to get the town participation, whether it's through the Affordable Housing Trust or the, the, hopefully the ARPA funds. There, and I, you know, if you could just elaborate on that just a little bit. Is, is this money important to you and, and you have a deadline in January for closing, so you have to come up with. Um. Certain. Uh, percentage of money, the down payment, if you will. Then, so if you could just elaborate on. If, if, would this project go forward if we said no, say we can't afford it? Or, or would, or does it help facilitate it?
There are ways to, for it to go forward, but it, it helps facilitate it and it helps to position us. Uh, in a way that, that would help us access other funds, so. As we've seen with our affordable housing developments that we've built from the ground up. When. Most those, the, the pre-development funds are mostly town funds. And when, when we receive those funds, we go out to DHCD and, and other funders. And one of the first questions they ask us is what, what support from the town have you leveraged thus far? And this is, this is a theme that I've heard not only in my experience, just in the short time I've been with the CDC. But when I go out and I talk to other folks and my other ED, uh, executive directors of, of community development corporations across the state. They say the same thing. The first thing we have to do is go to the town because other funders want to know. That the town believes in the project, is behind it and will support it in ways that it can.
So of the financing you need, is it, are you saying that you have ten thousand dollars secured only? Or is there additional financing that you have secured?
Uh, so the, the, the ten thousand I mentioned is in donations. There are, we have different terms that we are looking at right now with various funders and there are different types of. There are different types of funders. There are, um, there are banks. And then there are also, um. Partners that, that work with us in, um, that are non-traditional lenders. And Jim Harwood, the president of the board, would like for you to promote him as you did Eric to the, um. To this panel, if you would. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jim, was there something you wanted to add to that? What I was saying?
I just promoted him as a panelist. It'll take a second.
Yeah, I'm here now. Thank you very much. Sorry, I was. Long drive today.
If you could be brief, that would be great, Jim.
Oh, I was just, I was gonna let Carol go, but I, so. Um, you asked a question about will the project go forward without. Your money. Um, we're a determined bunch. Um, but we have. I, I, I think there's a few hurdles here. So there's, there's sort of three sets of challenges. One is buying the building. Two is fixing the building up. And three is owning and maintaining the building. So, um. The challenge that we're dealing with now is the buying the building and that's on a very tight timeframe. And we have the ability to fundraise and, and that is going to be very helpful when it comes to fixing the building up. Um, and we have expertise in. Managing and partners that we manage properties like this, uh, so that'll help us with the long-term ownership. The hurdle that is. The hardest for us. Um, and it's because we're competing with. Um, market rate investors who want to turn this into, um, luxury condominiums. Uh, we have to be able to commit to a purchase and sale and generate money quickly to secure financing to own the building. And then we're in a much better position. So if we. I mean, I, I think we're gonna have a, it's gonna be very tough for us if we don't get this money from you. We've gotten a big commitment. From the town. Uh, and with this money from you, we will be able to secure the purchase and sale, and then that will put us. In a position to get our financing in place and we can spend the next year raising. The million dollars we're gonna need to fix this building up. So, um. I'm not gonna throw in the towel if we don't get this money, but man, I don't, I'm not sure. How, how we get to the starting line without it, frankly.
So is all, are you saying that all of the down payment funds minus the ten thousand and donations raised from the community are going to be municipally funded?
Hmm, you don't have to repeat the question for me.
Is the town funding the whole down payment with the exception of the ten thousand?
No, not, not all of it, but a, a large portion of it because we need it. Quickly, as Jim mentioned, in order to secure, uh, control and ownership of the building. But the town, the town is being asked to invest significantly in it, but there. This is just the first round of fundraising that we need to do for the building because we expect. To have to, uh, fundraise additionally for repairs and that could be in the form of, of, um. Perhaps, you know, other, other types of funding from the state or elsewhere.
So what I, what you should know is I'm, I would like, I would like this building to get saved for this purpose in this way. I'm having a hard time because I don't have any numbers in front of me. I don't have like a financial outline for the proposal for. Um, the repairs you're talking about for the totality of the project. I see that in the proposal you talk about that, um, because it has tenants. That means there's gonna be a certain amount of income. That's great. Um, but it's very, it's very hard for me to follow this proposal without some financials.
Um, Ananda, did you not, did you not look at the pro forma that I sent?
That was not included on the packet that was sent to me.
Can we screen share?
Would be great. That would help me.
Do you have it at your fingertips, Carol, or should I pull it up?
You are off, uh, mic.
I do.
You, you're, you're on mute, you're muted.
Hang on, just one, hang on.
So do you need me to pull up the spreadsheet, Carol, or?
Fred, are you, you muted? Okay.
I muted myself because my dog was barking, but, um, please, please don't all speak at once. Ananda, uh, and Carol. I reviewed the pro forma, but I understood that it had confidential information in it. And it wasn't to be widely shared. Uh, the pro forma does have. Um. A very detailed financial breakdown of the building. Um. I don't know how to, how to, how to assure you that the, the numbers work without, um. So violating the, the confidentiality that the, uh, CDC has asked for since it is a, 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 a. Residential. Building. Maybe we could strip it down somehow or something.
I, I think I have two questions that could resolve that maybe.
Um, okay.
One is, what, what is the current rental income for the, from the property? And is that going to be enough to, um. Carry the mortgage payment after you put the six hundred thousand down?
So the current, the current rental income. Uh, during the. You know, if, if we set a, by setting a proper budget to this and, and creating a, you know, a pro forma with, with. Uh, multiple years in mind. Um, the, the plan includes things like, um. Uh, you know, all of the different expenses that we would, that we would want for this. So we've got all the things you would expect. Um, taxes, insurance, fuel, et cetera. But then there's also a line item in there called capital replacement reserve and Ananda, that, that's one of those things that you would want to see in there. Because that's money that you are accruing each year to be able to address. The, the needs of the building on, on an ongoing basis.
Um, can I answer that question directly, Carol?
Yeah.
So the. The rent that we've been told, the rent that we've been told is being collected now totals to about sixty-seven hundred dollars a month. Total across the eight apartments. Okay. Um. The. Rent that we project. In the first year would be seventy-five hundred dollars a month across the eight apartments. So it's a, it's just an increase, a slight increase, and then. We would, our goal would be to escalate that rent. Basically just to keep up with escalation. In costs, you know, so essentially for, for inflation. Um, and to put it in perspective. Um. A rental. The limit on a rental, a monthly rent for a unit. Is. Ranges between sixteen and eighteen hundred dollars a month. The current rents range between seven and nine hundred dollars a month. And we don't project taking them. Past the thousand dollars a month for the biggest units or some of them will stay. Under eight hundred dollars a month. So basically our goal, right, is to keep this. As affordable as possible. But still be financially viable. So if the building isn't financially viable, somebody else is gonna buy it and they're gonna turn it into market rate. And we're gonna keep it well below. Um, allowable. So those numbers I gave you on the rent ranges were in the sixty-five percent. Uh, AMI, and we're gonna restrict.
Couple?
Was, um, well, it's for depending. Some of these are one bedrooms and that would be a couple and some of these.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that the, um, the AMI varies and the sixteen hundred figure seems a little high for an individual.
No, it's, I, I, it's for a couple, but again, we're not charging anywhere near that, right? We're, we're, we're down at nine hundred. Yeah, uh, so the, the rents we're carrying are. Seven ninety, eight, eight twenty. Um, middle, upper nines and. So, and so that, that's where we are. So we're, we're not getting anywhere near that. And so for the two-bedroom units. You know, you could, you can calculate it a lot of different ways, but we figured three people. Um, you could, I think you're entitled to figure it at four, but we didn't, and even still, we're not approaching the limit at all. We're well below, you know, we're at two-thirds of the limit.
And did you say what the, um, how that compares to the mortgage?
I'm sorry, you don't have to repeat the question.
Bill, wasn't your question about, um, it wasn't?
Oh, yes, it was. Yeah. So how does that, how does that cash flow? So the other thing that's great about this building is the commercial rents. Okay, and they're significant because they'll end up. Um. Subsidizing the, the residential rents. But basically this building, um, you know, there's, there's two ways the, you, you have, um. Um. Principal and interest, so. Our cash flows predicts a very tight first year that's actually likely. To lose. To cash flow negative, but when you figure, um, the principal, it's actually positive. And then, um. The following years after that. Uh, all cash flow positive. So that's, I mean, that's, it's part of my point that we're not. We're not jacking these rents and we're keeping it right at the limit. Where we think. We can make this building sustainable. Uh, to serve the population that we're committed to serving.
And so I have a. Follow-up question to something Ananda, or asked earlier. She asked if. All of the down payment would be coming from the town. And as I see. Uh, I understood that some of it would be coming from, hopefully coming from the Affordable Housing Trust. Some of it hopefully from ARPA funds from the town. But also that there's a certain amount of CDC equity that would be assumed to be. Uh, required. Is that, can you comment on that, please?
Yeah, so I mean, part of, part of our issue here, right, is that we're in a negotiation to buy a building. And this is a public meeting. Um, and those two things don't go very well together. Um. So. In, in the long run, this is a three million dollar, in, in the, in the midterm, this is a three million dollar project all day long. And we're gonna have, um. You know, uh, one point eight. Sorry, we're gonna have a, a million dollars of our money in there. Um, and that's gonna be a combination, you know, we get that from a variety of sources. We get that from fundraising and. Donations and grant money and, and we're, you know, we're gonna be. We're gonna be using all our leverage, so we're gonna be coming up with a million dollars in the next year for this building. We can't come up with a million dollars in the next month for this building. We just can't do it. It's not gonna happen.
You're looking to raise six hundred thousand for the down payment, is that right?
Yes.
Good round numbers, yes.
Okay.
Um, Eric Bruin, did you wanna say something about, I see your hands up and I know that you are on your part of CDC.
Yeah, I'm, uh, Eric Bruin, I'm on the CDC board. Uh, I wanted to say a couple of things. Uh, one is that. Um. The, um, advantage of this project for, for a group like Affordable Housing Trust is the way that it leverages money. Um, that, uh. There are eight housing units, uh, for asking for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's twelve thousand, five hundred dollars per unit. Um, to preserve housing and it will trigger. Uh, that hundred thousand dollars would trigger close to two and a half million between the bank financing, other funding and private fundraising. Um, there's always a thing of who goes first into the pool. Um, on, on endeavors like this, and we've got people right on the edge of the pool. And, you know, a commitment from you all, uh. Would allow for. Two and a half million dollars of water, um, essentially, um. And it's a way of really. Getting the most out of the, what is really, you know, insufficient amount of money to, to, to accomplish the goals of the Affordable Housing Trust. You know, uh, it's a, we're talking tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars problem. And so how we use our monolit, money is really important. We want to be smart about every dollar. And one dollar from the Affordable Housing Trust here will trigger twenty dollars from other places. So I think that. And that's my understanding of like your, um. Your project, uh, your program to help. People get mortgages, um. And it's very much a very similar concept. The a fundamental difference is CDC, this is the equity, it's, I mean. Equity for a nonprofit corporation is not anybody making money. Equity for a nonprofit corporation is not anybody making money. It's um. It's, it's for the cause of, you know, the mission. I mean, the CDC's. Uh, stakeholders and a mission, it doesn't have shareholders with cash returns. So I I think that there are. Um, a lot of advantages in addition to the commercial element. I mean, and I live right next. Door. Uh, to this building. Um, and downtown, a mixed use is it's part of the character of community. Um, when you have people who live in the community who shop in the stores downstairs, um, that is the. The heart of a community. Um, and. You know, it has quantitative benefits as well as. I mean, sorry, qualitative benefits as well as quantitative that we've been talking about. Um. So. That's my thought. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, I think this is a perfect use of our model personally.
I do too.
Okay, John. Um, you know, we have talked about this. Uh, basically, while Eric said that there's eight units that will stay. Affordable, what they're essentially offering us is one unit for a hundred thousand dollars at a hundred percent. I have a little bit of concern about the hundred percent of area median income. Uh, I would prefer that our income restriction would be at eighty percent area median income. I understand that, you know, if that's gonna be. Difficult, but I think it could be something that's part of the conversation. Um, I understand that ARPA funds may be considered, and if they're available. There's gonna be a a more like a sixty five percent uh AMI uh restriction. Uh, on on those units. Yeah, we've talked about this before. We talked about this at a previous meeting in terms of buying down. I think that. What we need to do is shift more to existing buildings. Uh, and uh, development that's uh. In investing with our our partners in the central core of. Uh, of both, you know, Great Downtown, Great Barrington and and in Housatonic. Rather than on the outer outlining areas uh there. Ananda, do you wanna go ahead again?
Yeah, I have uh two questions. One um for. For uh the CDC folks. Um, you have a rough description of who's living there now, um, without. Disclosing anything that wouldn't be appropriate. Can you, do you have a sense of um? Will all of the tenants currently in the building now? Be eligible to remain in the building under restrictions, under AMI restrictions?
Uh, so I have a sense based on the fact, one is retired and there are nine. Uh, basically looking at the jobs that they have and uh estimating what those salaries would make. They would, they would fall uh within the risk, the amounts that we're discussing.
So based on the information you have, you don't expect you would have to um. Evict anybody because of the new restrictions?
No.
Are they, are their apartments in good condition at this point? Are they livable?
They're livable. They're they're, people have been living, it looks like these folks have been there for a while and.
Let me ask, what is your plan for renovations? Uh, Jim had mentioned a million dollars going forward. For renovations after a significant period of fundraising, which I think he said a year or so. Uh. What is your plan for renovations?
So there are some, there, we anticipate that there are some things that we may have to address immediately, but. We don't want to dis, we wanna minimize displacement. Oh, that's our ultimate goal is to minimize displacement, so. Uh, whatever we do, it will be incremental. And we are, uh, we're looking at at the uh, at the inspection report right now. And beginning to to think about and plot out what that, what a plan would look like. Um, but for, you know, just. We, we don't want to displace anyone. That's the ultimate goal for purchasing this building, so. Uh, as we do renovations, we wanna hold that same philosophy. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Jim?
Yeah, so I mean, there's kind of, as Carol was alluding to, there's a few. There's some things that are urgent, so the building leaks, it needs a roof. Okay, there's evidence of knob and tube wiring. We gotta do a little more investigation. If there's knob and tube wiring there, it's gonna go. Um. And so there's that kind of order of of, you know, smoke alarms, right? If the smoke alarms don't work, they're gonna be fixed, right? That's. That's just gotta happen right away. Um, then there's a set of. Um, other kinds of upgrades. The windows aren't that energy efficient. The heating system's not that energy efficient. Um. Uh, there may be particular issues specific to one apartment or another. Um, and the the approach to those renovations is that they would be incremental. And the best way to do an incremental renovation for a building like this would be to free up one apartment. Renovate one apartment. Move your tenant from apartment two back to apartment one that's now renovated, then renovate apartment two, and you just go down the line like that. So that, and then those renovations of the apartment can be. You know, um, depending on the scope, weeks and months, as opposed to, you know, a building wide renovation that takes two years. Um, and so then you minimize disruption, you um, spread the work out over time. And um, I I think that will enable us to best serve the tenants with with with, you know. Hopefully, those, right? That's our goal.
And then if you do receive the requested ARPA funds from um. From the town and the one hundred thousand from the Affordable Housing Trust, also town funds. Um, what percentage of the apartments will then be restrict, deed restricted in a way that's tied to um area median income?
Five eights, five eights.
What Jim said.
Five eights is eight, so five, that's about sixty percent, little more.
So are you saying that if you're only offering us one apartment? Deed restricted?
Yeah, they're all deed restricted.
Well.
Well.
Yeah, but Eric, there's different limits tied to the different pots of money, so. The uh Affordable Housing Trust can go a little bit higher with the CPA funds to one hundred percent, whereas the. Sixty, is it sixty or sixty five percent?
Sixty five.
So. You know. Deed restriction. You know, what our goal, I I realize that this deal wants to be set up in a way that if CDC SB gets hit by a bus. You still have restrictions in place. And that would exist on five out of eight of the apartments. And our only, our our concern, right, is that we have flexibility to manage the building. Um, so that it's sustainable. And we've already said that even, even with the the sixty five percent deed restriction, we see the rent being significantly lower than that. In all the apartments. Even, even though we're only talking about four units at that deed restriction and. And uh, an additional at a higher, you know, we said a hundred, you just said eighty, you know, we're happy to talk to you, you know, about that. We're still gonna be well below those numbers. Um, but we wanna be careful that this wants to be workforce housing. And we don't wanna. And 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 we don't wanna run the, you know, we need the building to be financially sustainable, so. That that's why, to me, there's a difference between. Deed restricting of five of the eight and keeping the apartments affordable across the whole eight.
And to build, to build on that a little bit, Ananda, uh, you know, we. We have forty nine affordable housing units coming online at Windrush Commons next year. And the the workforce housing uh. Area really is a, is a, it's a bubble almost. It's a, it's a donut hole, if you will.
Oh, yeah, you don't have to make the case to me. I.
You know this, you know this.
And I like an opportunity to leverage Affordable Housing Trust investment in a way that also gets us. Workforce housing as part of where other funding's coming from in a project.
Yeah.
Um, Fred, I was curious about you, you were saying you would prefer eighty percent. Can you say more about why?
When we first started working uh with the Affordable Housing Trust, we were talking more about. Affordable housing being closer to sixty to eighty percent in the traditional definitions. Because we were looking at um. Purchases with our um. Down payment assistance program, and because the market has been so uh skewed. Uh, towards the upside, we looked into what the maximum that we could do, which is a hundred percent of area median income. By state law. But. I think traditionally, we saw affordable housing as. Up to eighty percent of area median income. And not always at a hundred percent of area median income. I realize that the marketplace is really skewed right now, so basically. I'm trying to go back to the traditional model that we looked at. Uh, as opposed to the legal maximum, which is a hundred percent.
I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't wanna help more working people.
Uh, you know, this is only a suggestion. It's only one member. Uh, so I think you make a good argument. I could support that. Uh, and I I just wanna say this one comment, um, given what other developments, uh. The other major projects in downtown Great Barrington that are coming to the town for money, primarily CPA money. This is a bargain. This is getting, uh, you know, deed restricted units at a, at a, a cheaper price than. Uh, other developers are telling us, uh, they would. Uh, request. So. Plus, the, the, you know, I I like the idea of leveraging the other rental units there, that as long as CDC owns this building. I know that they're not gonna be renting them for three thousand dollars a month. To uh, the high end of the marketplace, that they're going to be coming in with, you know, as Carol said. Workforce housing can be a donut hole where people who make too much money. To qualify for some of the traditional affordable housing programs that are based on AMI. But not enough money to, you know, buy a condo or co-op. Uh, or or something, uh. Don't benefit and and I think CDC has an opportunity to create a couple of units that would uh. Be a appropriate for people who make just a little bit too much money.
Hmm.
You know, not, not a lot, just a little bit.
And and what I love about this too is that it it. It really marries both sides of our mission, the economic development portion of it and the housing portion of it, because. In in many of the apart, the the apartments on Main Street, the ones that are, have not yet. Been turned into market rate apartments. Those folks work in the restaurants downstairs. Uh, and and so we know that we are helping by preserving these apartments. We are helping some of the businesses right there in downtown to survive and maybe even some of our own tenants' businesses. Um, so that's something that we think about and and we're pleased that that's a part of this uh mixed use opportunity.
Does anyone else have any other comments? Anything else anybody wants to say? If not, I think we're, oh. Um, I think we're, we're done with this part. What I'd like to do is throw up on the screen, um. A budget so that I can show the committee where we would be coming, where the money would be coming from. So.
Can I just sort of recap one thing? Which is, you know, you were talking about the the leverage that you're getting for this money um in. In in comparison to how the other things you've talked about with other developers. And I I think the other just really important part about this money is. Your. You're handling a weakness for us, which is a, a agile financial response, right? For us to get this done quickly and then that love, that allows us to bring our superpower to bear, which is fundraising. So.
Uh, I think it's a great marriage. I think it's a great partnership. And, you know, I think that this is a a great example of what we've been talking about for the last five years of how we. Would like to have money so that we are, you use the word agile. I like that. Uh, we're agile in the marketplace because the real estate and development marketplace requires that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Without any, I mean, thank you very much, guys. We're gonna have our little discussion now. You're welcome to uh, uh, sit. Back and 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 and. Uh, view our meeting. Oh, darn. And I, what I would like to do right now is. Share my screen if I can figure out how to do it. If anybody uh is okay with that, um.
Sure.
And let me just get this. Bigified. And then, um. It's a little bit big right now. Let's see if we can get this down. Can you see that?
Hmm, no.
No.
Well, I mean, is it up on the screen?
Yes, it is on the screen.
Okay, so what this is, is if, is that, that's about as big as I can make it and still have everything shown. On there, so I hope you can read it. Okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, on the left side are the programs, down payment, emergency rental assistance. I put the Mahawi Pope neighborhood program, the marble block, the tiny house and the North Plain Road. Um, on the third column is a description of what those programs are. Uh, the fourth column titled Balance Forward has the amount of monies that we have from previous. Years budget that's coming forward. And then on the. Uh, fifth column fiscal year twenty twenty three funding. Uh, that is the money that we basically, what I'm, what I'm suggesting, we allocate. The two hundred thousand dollars of fiscal year twenty twenty three CPA grant. You'll notice at the bottom of the column, the total is two hundred thousand. On the sixth column fiscal year twenty twenty three budgeted expense, those are the budget numbers which I'm suggesting. Uh. We will be spending during this year. So those are made up, for instance, in the down payment assistance. I've had a discussion with Construct. Um, they have suggested that fifty thousand dollars from this year would be uh appropriate and sufficient. To continue the down payment. I'm I'm sorry. The Emergency Rental Assistance Program, I was on the wrong line. Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We have thirty five thousand still in that fund. I'm suggesting we take fifteen thousand from our twenty, two hundred thousand dollar funding. And give them fifty thousand dollars for the down payment assistance. Similarly. I'm reserving fifty thousand dollars for down payment assistance on a small sum for advertising. Um. I am suggesting that the Mahawi Pope uh project that we had previously talked about. Be passed over until fiscal twenty twenty four. In other words, the money's not coming out of this budget. You'll notice that on the next line, the marble block, I have included a hundred thousand dollars. That is a placeholder. It's a budgeted number. I put it there so that we could understand where the money's coming from. And then the final one is budgeting forty thousand dollars for the ADU tiny house. I wanna let you know that. And then on the North Plain Road parcel, we have the Mass Works grant, but there are no monies. From our uh current. Budget, uh. That we have control of being used again for North Plain Road. I wanna let you know that this is only a proposal. This is um. Me acting as your executive administrator, putting together a budget based upon what I understood the will of the committee wants. And we certainly can. Adjust any of those arguments. My point in talking about this right now is to indicate to you. That we have enough money in our funds to allocate a hundred thousand dollars for a deed restriction in the marble block. And still have sufficient monies available to do the other programs that we. Uh, have discussed and have planned for. So. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I have a question, Fred. What you've, you've allocated the marble block money to fiscal year twenty twenty-three?
Well, isn't that where we're in?
Yes.
Okay. So.
If we made the grant this year, we come out of this year's money.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So, I mean, this is what we've been talking about all along. All total, we have. Two hundred and forty-six thousand at play, putting aside the mass, putting aside the. Um. Mass works grant, which. It's not clear to me whether that actually is something that we oversee financially, I, or if it's just. The town administrative offices. And we want to use one hundred thousand of it, where the proposal is to use one hundred thousand of it for the. Marble block, correct?
Correct.
A hundred thousand of the money we have available this year. Has nothing to do with the Mass Works Grant.
Right, I'm saying like, put that aside. We have it, we're looking at a total pot of two hundred and forty-six thousand.
Right.
Yes.
And then out of that, you want to put seventy-five into. You want to put seventy-five. Into rental assistance?
Uh, no. Uh. Those, those numbers sum up horizontally, um. So. We have.
Yeah, what I can't see is, what I can't see is what, what does that lead, like, because you have the mass infrastructure in there, I can't see what the balances you're talking about. Us leaving, that leaving us with to play with this year. Where is everything assigned?
To play with? I don't understand the question.
Well, that's uncommitted.
We budgeted. All of the money that we have available, uh, there are, if we spend this money. Uh, we won't have any more money to play with. In your words.
So this is include, this assumes that we're spending forty thousand on the ADU tiny house?
We, this is a proposal only, and it's a placeholder. If you talk about. You know. We could take money out of any one of these line items and say, we don't have enough money. The rental assistance, the ADU tiny house, the down payment assistance, we've consistently said. That we will make grants if funds are available. If there's something that this, the will of this committee prefers. Um, we can go forward. Now, having to said that. Some of the money from the previous fiscal years is restricted as to what we can use it on.
Yes, I understand.
So that only the down payment assistance and rental assistance programs there. And what we want to do is try to zero out those previous year. Grants so that we're not carrying them on the books.
Yes.
But, I mean, you know, maybe. Like I said, I put forty thousand as a placeholder because I assume that that would be. Uh, an adequate number to do something with either the ADU or tiny house or something.
It won't be an adequate number to do anything with the ADU. So, and that's fine. I know that. In, I know that talk, that what we're talking about doing for the marble block building takes the ADU proposal off the table for, for this fiscal year. And I think that's fine. We're talking about eight units.
Um, yeah. I mean, I, I think it would. I think that we could. Do one project, uh, with that money, but, you know.
You could do a tiny house project, not an ADU project.
Yeah.
Which locks us into the tiny house. Proposal in some ways. Or. Increase, or, you know, increasing rental assistance or down payment or something.
Well, to decide that tonight.
No, I think, I think the reason it's part of the discussion is because what, if we decide to approve this one hundred thousand, it limits. What else will get done this year? My argument would be that's okay. We're talking about eight units for a hundred thousand. From Harp perspective.
I agree.
I agree too.
Would you like a motion, Fred?
Um, yes, uh, I would like a motion regarding, uh, awarding. CDC a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, for a deed restricted unit for the use of the so-called marble block.
Sure, I move that we. Um. Give the CDC, uh, commit to giving the CDC a hundred thousand dollars. For the purchase of the marble block, um. Contingent upon the purchase going through and. At least two of the units being no more than a hundred percent area median income for rent.
Uh. Can I have a second and then we can have a discussion? Um, so. Okay, got a second. So, uh. Bill, your, your. Motion says contingent on two of the, A, going forward, that is a good. Thing to add. Also, um. Two of the units being income restricted, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, they've already said they'll do five, so I don't see that as being an issue. I'd just like that to be. Part of. Uh, what we do, but included in our.
I just want to put a point of order or a point of clarification in, in that what they're offering is one deed restricted unit to. The Affordable Housing Trust for that commitment of a hundred thousand dollars. That's what they're offering. Anything else they're talking about with, uh, with the town for, uh, ARPA money?
Okay.
So can we modify?
And they can't increase the, they can't increase the AMI percentage for the ARPA money because that's fixed to ARPA. And so essentially that means we'd be taking what we'd be requiring that they take one more apartment and restrict it. And I am against that.
So Bill, can we modify, um? Modify that to say one deed restricted unit perhaps?
Yes, I'll. I'll retract my motion and make it one deed restricted unit.
And Chris, I believe you seconded. Yep, you agree?
Yep.
Okay. So the motion on the table is to award a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, for the purchase of the marble block. Contingent on the project going forward and one deed restricted. Unit at a hundred percent of, said no more than a hundred percent of area. Uh. Median income. And so the vote is a roll call vote. Is there any other discussion?
Chairman.
Yes.
Quick point of order. Discussion, may.
Uh, this is really for the members here, uh, to discuss, uh.
Just the language in the motion suggests the money would come after closing, but the money needs to come at closing.
No, that I believe that language says that, uh, unless it goes forward. You have to give us the money back.
Okay, great.
So, um.
Sorry for the interruption. Yeah, that, that is my intention. The only, the only reason we would not give you the money is if the deal just evaporated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um.
So point of clarification, um. So can I have clarification? Is it, am I, is it accurate that, um? The. Pro forma is not something that we can have be part of public record at this point for reasons of confidentiality? Yes. Is the point at the future where that will no longer be the case and it can be included in the record at that point?
Sure.
Yes. What point would that be? I'd like to offer amendment to. The motion so that the performer will be included in the public record, but can, but at the point at which that is not a problem for you all.
Could it, could we say prior to closing?
Yes.
Uh. Well, since there's a motion on the table, we'll need a second.
Well, so, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend your motion, Bill.
Yes.
Um. If we could add. In the, in the words that most suit. What you're looking at, Fred, um. That the pro forma will be included in the public rec- record prior to closing.
You need a second?
I do need a second before we can discuss.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, couple of seconds. Um. I have no problem with that, and I think, you know, from a. Public fiduciary responsibility. Uh, it makes a lot of sense to have as much public, uh, information available as, as, as. As possible, uh, since we are spending the public's money. Um. So the motion on the table is to amend the main motion. Uh, to include, uh, pro forma financial statement. Uh, at the time or before, uh. A real estate closing on the property. Uh. And so a yes motion is that you approve to amend the main motion. Um. And it's a roll call vote. Any other discussion?
Yes, Fred, before we go forward, I see Eileen Mooney has a hand up and I'm wondering.
Eileen Mooney is not a member of the board and she will be able to speak at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Um, this is, we have a motion on the table to amend the main motion. And, uh, the chair will entertain any discussion on the amendment. Hearing none. Uh, roll call vote. Bill Cook.
Hi.
Amanda.
Hi.
John Katz.
Yes.
Garfield.
Hi.
Teresa.
Hi.
Okay, and the chair votes aye as well. The motion to amend is unanimous. Going back to the main motion, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. This is a. Motion to, um. Pro- uh, provide a grant for a hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of the mo- marble block contingent on it going forward. One deed restriction, a hundred percent AMI, a pro forma financial statement will be included. At the appropriate time up to closing. Uh, so, uh, roll call vote. Bill Cook.
Yes, I.
John?
Yes.
Garfield?
Yes.
Amanda?
Hi.
Teresa?
Hi.
And the chair votes, uh, yes as well. It's unanimous. Uh, thank you all, um. And I'm gonna stop sharing my screen.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. This is incredible.
Thank you for, for coming forward and thank you for preserving this.
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a great thing for the town. We're all doing it together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And.
I'm gonna say goodnight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Night, Jim. Good work.
Alright, thank you.
So, uh, there were a couple of things I was gonna carry through on the, uh, I, I guess I can go back here. Um. And. Uh, see, there's a couple of things that just are housekeeping things that I'd like to go through quickly if I may. Um. The, uh, on the North Plain Road project that we're, we're doing with Habitat, uh. The project is in the process of talking to the planning board. As you may know, we went, they went in front of the planning board in. Uh, August for an informational meeting, uh. The planning board required or suggested additional units, uh, be provided. To give you a background, the, the, the North Plain Road site is now still in the control of the town. But it's, uh, seven point seven acres that we purchased, uh, a couple of years ago for the purpose of affordable housing. Put an RFP out and Habitat was awarded development of the project. Because of the Mass Works Grant, the town has kept the ownership until. Uh, until the infrastructure is going to be built. We have the Mass Works Grant to build the infrastructure. Is part of that, we are, um. Planning, going through the planning for a planned unit, uh, I think it's a comprehensive planning. Garfield, you could probably help me out on what we're doing here, but.
Plan unit residential though.
Yes. Uh. The planning board has recommended very strongly and, uh, the development in the town have listened. To include more units. They've come back with a, uh, a, a, a layout for thirty. Houses. Uh, they will take that to the planning board, um. To be scheduled in January. And, uh, this is, we think, good news. It still respects everything that we wanted to do on, on the project in terms of the, uh. The goals for the project for, uh. Uh, density and, and for, uh, appropriateness and for providing affordable housing.
Excuse me, Fred, did you say the planning board came up with the thirty or it was Habitat that came?
Uh. Thank you for the question. Um, the planning board. Strongly suggested that there needed to be more units. Uh, provided there in order for the layout to work well. And our engineer, which is white engineering. Uh, took that information along with the other. Goals that we had for the project in terms of how. How accessible it would be, the open space requirements, uh, the road, the topography, the drainage. And. Has reworked the plan so that there are thirty units. Uh, I reviewed it, uh, along with Bill. Bill is vice chair, so he and I, uh, reviewed it. We made a couple of suggestions which they've now incorporated, and I think that they're going to be bringing them back. Uh, to the planning board in January. So this is basically just a report telling you this is good news and everything's moving forward. Okay, um, Grove Street, I asked for an update. Uh, I did not get it by the time of this meeting and, uh. I am disappointed in that, but, uh, the construction is going forward. They have, uh, the Teconic. High School Carpentry Program working on some of the, uh. Development for the Grove Street. I. I, uh, I do not know if they've selected a, a future owner yet. This is another Habitat project that we awarded for them. Um.
I have a question, but can't get my hand up here.
Yeah, yeah, please ask.
All right, okay, so. They're suggesting thirty. Now, you know, we had double up a time with the folks and who's the time? Are we going to give them? Uh, for lack of a better term, the moment first refusal on that, are they gonna chance to hear that? We put it up to thirty as opposed to, we were at, what, only fourteen to twenty at one point?
I believe that this is all in the front of the planning board.
Correct, which is a town whose the time, which is kind of who we were dealt with and kind of. Tried to make things amenable with them. I think that's why we have a lesser number, but is that now?
Well, I'm not sure that's why we had a lesser number. I think that there were some other issues involved in. Drainage and, uh, topography that were involved.
And safety sidewalk, yeah.
Yep. So, um.
But will they see this or not? I guess, my question.
Uh. It's in front of the planning board.
Okay.
Um. I don't know the process. You probably know it better than I do of what, how the planning board would approach this.
Uh, I won't say. I'll keep my comments to myself. Okay.
Amanda, you have a, a question, comment?
Um. I, you know, I, I think my question really has to do with both this and your comment that, um. You don't know where we are, where they are in the process with. You don't know where we are, where they are in the process with the Grove Street in terms of an owner selection. I think it might be helpful to have, um. Have it re- beca- have our role and relationship with Habitat made very clear. Because, um, it's not to me, I know we're in some kind of partnership, I know that this is, um. You know, our initial investment, um, but there's. You know, we had, the, I mean, I have some consistent concerns about their ability to actually work with this community. Um, at this, around the question with the, the additional units, like. Do we, I, I assume that where we are in the process. The Housing Trust actually has no say going forward in change in design like that, which I'm fine with, but again, getting to kind of clarity. And I, you know, I'd like to know why, well, I know why, I know why they're using the Teconic students and not local students. But, um. Again, in terms of having this be a community project with community buy-in. That makes a big difference in who sees that as their future home, and I feel like that is our job and that. Is something for us to steward and without clarity in the partnership, it's hard to, um. It's hard to be in partnership well and, um, have the oversight roles that are appropriate for us, so. I'd like to have that clarified in a way that we can all review and look at and be, and in a, a future meeting. And is there an existing agreement about how we're in partnership and who's responsible for what?
I believe there is.
I have a, uh, Bill and I, I think Bill's invited too, we have a, uh, conference call. With them, uh, I think it's January sixth, that's just off the top of my head. I think it's right after the first of the year. Uh, on my calendar, I can look, but. And we were going to talk about some of those things then, or we will talk about some of those things then, and try to bring a little bit more, um, definition there. It's been frustrating, I would have fired their engineer a long time ago because of, um. Perceived lack of response, on the other hand, the Affordable Housing Trust is not hiring them. So, I don't know what. How, what instructions they've been given, what, what they've been told.
Yeah, it's, it's the questions about the engineer, it's the questions about what's happening with Grove Street, it's. That I, we have spoken more than once about the kind of outreach we'd like to see in the community, it's, um. There's just some missing pieces, and I think there's a lot, uh, I think there's a lot of smart things about this partnership, but the missing pieces are really key pieces. To s- community success, so. Um, could we have that agreement shared out in advance of our next meeting? So that we can be looking that along, uh, looking at that alongside the update.
Yes, and I, I think it might be appropriate to invite, uh, Habitat to sit with us and ex- and talk about it.
I'm just saying, I agree with Ananda as well, we need to have clear defined, uh. Uh, issues between the two of us, we both know what we're, we're doing. And you're right, I, I know they are doing it, but I'm not sure how, Bill, you might know better, what kind of, um.
Well, last I talked. Yeah, last I talked to Carolyn, she said that they were gonna start, um. Promoting it and getting a.
Yeah, my question is, yeah, because they have not done it well in our community. And that matters, and have they been, have they talked to our local high schools? Now, they can't, they aren't chapter seventy-four programs and they can't be on site, but they can, they, we could, they could do cabinets, they could be, so. Yeah, I mean, it really, really, really matters who in this community sees that as their future home. Or part, or something, somebody in our community was part of building.
And I, I'm assuming that whoever becomes a homeowner still has to put in their. Six hundred hours or whatever, uh, rehabbing the place too. So, they, they'd have to collect someone before it's finished.
I would see surprised that they didn't have somebody selected already. But I can show you the emails and, and such that, I mean. That I've sent asking for information and I get back, we'll look into that and I'll get back to you. And never get back to me.
Well, and there would have to be a lottery, right?
Yes.
And I have not seen that posted anywhere in South County, so if they had a lot, they, they can't have a so- somebody selected yet, because. They.
But, but I want them to be in this house in the spring, summer, that's what our original goal and, and schedule was. So, you know.
Yeah, if there's some things not working, we need to understand why, we need to. What are, what leverage we have to get it fixed.
Understood, regarding the North Plain Road, uh, I support their. Revision and we, the Affordable Housing Trust in the form of me and Bill. Were, uh, invited to comment on, you know, it, it, it came up, so we couldn't wait to the next meeting. And it was a working session, uh, to deal with the technical issues of road layouts and things like that. So, um, I'd rather not show them to you right now because, uh. They're going to be gone, coming in front of the planning board, so.
Yeah, um. But it, uh, my, so my question is, do we, uh. Do we even have any role in that layout at this point?
Uh, we have an advisory role.
Well, if we have an advisory role and we need to advise on it as part of the process, then the whole board has to advise on it. And it has to be, or it has to be in the record that we did the advising. About.
I agree with that, Fred.
Okay. Um, I felt like I was keeping you up to date as much as possible. Uh, but some of the. Layout details were. Happening in between meetings.
Yeah, it's just that when we're not in meetings, no matter what our roles are, we don't have any power. Right, like, we only have power when we're convened at a group, as a group. And so we have to record into the record the advising for the advising to have happened.
I didn't see it that way.
Yeah, I think that's just legally how it is.
I'm not so sure that I agree with you. I'm happy to be, you know, um. Change in, in any way you, you, you'd like, that, that, the, the sense of the committee is that, that they'd like, but. We would have to be meeting much more frequently, uh, and or, and have working sessions to, to, to talk about those kinds of things. I think there's certain things that. Fall into the realm of technical details that can be worked out. And brought to the committee, similar to what you would do in a subcommittee or whatnot, even though we don't have subcommittees.
Can I ask you about the thirty homes as a planning board I thought, talked about, did you say that wouldn't have anything, um. Go against our original plans, because there were some people or a person on the planning board that. Pushing for more and thought it was a, we weren't using the space properly, and I wanna make sure that we. Aren't, um, crowding ourselves or, or, or taking someone's demand that's not gonna be good for the project, you know what I'm saying?
Believe he was talking about sixty-four houses. Talking about sixty-four. Uh, he provided a layout earlier on where he said that, uh, under town zoning. Uh, he believed that you could achieve a density of sixty houses. We, I've done a layout, uh, just for my own information. At that time, and I think Bill did a sketch as well, and, uh, the engineer and Chris and others. And said, we don't believe it's possible that. You could meet the project goals and have sixty-four houses. So, you know, I think. We're meeting the project goals and we're providing, uh, a good balance of. Use of the land and, uh, providing affordable housing. And I, and I'm very pleased with the word, the direction that we're going in. Uh, can we move on?
How many houses do you see, Fred?
The current proposal is for thirty homeownership units. Uh, a couple of those would be. Shared party wall units, but you would own them individually.
Got you.
They would be about each other, and each one has its own, you know, area and driveway and, and such, and it's really, you know. Very workable.
Well, it's a killjoy, but we're running up on eight here, so we're gonna wrap it up and maybe find.
Sure, um, however, I would like, if I may, to share my screen once more. Because, um. I have another budget to show you. Here, and let me just. Get this. In some kind of place where you could see it. Now, I realize this looks like the last budget, because I use the same template. But, um, what I wanted to tell you is. Uh, I have been interviewed by CPA Committee. Uh, for round, first round, which was in October and it was October or November. And, uh, most recently, uh, a couple of weeks ago, or last week. For, um, the fiscal year twenty-four, so. Previous program that I showed you is for fiscal year of twenty-three, this using the same template. Is a budget projection for fiscal year, uh, twenty-four, in other words. This is the ask for the CPA. We, uh, as a committee asked for three hundred and forty thousand dollars. The, uh, CPA, the line that's, uh, has a. Budgeted expense for fiscal year twenty-four are the suggestions, and this is only a draft. Uh, if you. Wanna, you know, uh, go forward with it, then, um. So, uh, I wanted, you know, just say this continues. Uh, the down payment and rental assistance programs. It budgets money for the Mahawi Pope. Project that, uh, we had talked about in an earlier meeting. And it budgets seventy-five thousand for some kind of a ADU slash tiny house. Pilot and or incentive program. That. That's where the three hundred and forty thousand dollars comes from.
This get voted on before it was submitted to as the proposal?
Uh, it got discussed, but not voted on.
And is there a point at which we had a proposal for the Mahawi Pope neighborhood that we reviewed?
Uh, this is for w- work that would be happening in a year or a year and a half from now, so this is only a placeholder. For wor- for a proposal that would be next year, we have to have the money available before we can entertain a proposal.
Yeah, I.
Just work the other way, we can't get a proposal and then come down to fair and find the money.
Yeah, I understand that, I under- stand the CPA part, what I'm asking about is our internal, cause I. I, some things, it seems we have to, we have to have an internal proposal process where something is drafted and we talk about it or don't talk about it, never make a decision. And, uh, something else like this, I missed one meeting, and it's in a budget for a hundred and forty thousand. That we never voted on, that got submitted as a request to another town body, so I'd like us to tighten up our procedure. Or at least be consistent and that there's a review process and that we are functioning as a board.
Yeah, I missed that meeting too, so I wasn't voting for it.
We haven't voted for this, this is a proposed budget for next year, this is, this breakdown is showing you, uh. What the three hundred, how the three hundred and forty thousand was determined. There, we talked about it at our meeting, uh, but we did not take it to a vote.
So my points are two things, one that we should be as a matter of fact reviewing. Um, reviewing to propose submissions for proposals in advance as a body and approving them before they get sent off. Separately from that. Um, that I have a larger process point about how we're functioning as a body, that there's a great inconsistency between things that. Ha- that we decide have to go into some, go write that idea down process. And something that can show up in a proposal is a hundred and forty thousand dollars with only discussion at one meeting. And that may be fine, that may be a fine way to do it, but then we need to do it that way for the other things too.
Well. Honestly, it's not a proposal, as I mentioned before, it's a placeholder on a budget. For money to be spent a year, a year and a half from now. Uh, there, it, before that money would be spent, before this budget would be accepted and approved. This is a worksheet, if you will. Uh, that. Indicates how the programs going forward, uh, make up the budget request.
Did the one hundred and forty thousand go into the proposal to the CPA?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is not just a worksheet.
No, this is a worksheet.
The concepts behind this worksheet are not just, the, there's substance to them, and it. And it might be fine, I'm just saying, we need, we need some consistency in our internal process. Because, you know, you, you've, I've watched you kick up. Proposals, ideas back to people that before we can even discuss it, they need to go and write and write and write. And then we don't discuss it again. So we have a problem with our process that I think is, is correctable, and that's all I'm asking.
Okay, if you have a problem with me, you can choose somebody else for a chair. Uh, this is a worksheet that was used to create the CPA application.
Okay, so does that mean that?
I would prefer, I mean.
My, excuse me, I want some clarification.
Yes, of course.
That mean that the hundred forty thousand dollars, that if we get the money from CPA. All the money that we ask for, we can use the hundred forty thousand for something else.
Um, that's to be determined, it, uh. We would prefer it to be that way. We would prefer them to give us a grant that isn't restricted for each particular line item. We would prefer them to give us a grant that says, uh, for any housing purpose. That is my understanding of what happened for the fiscal year twenty-two-three. That the money that we were given wasn't restricted by line item to a specific i- item. And, but rather done for every housing purpose, to have it any other way is to. Uh, void the, uh, avoid the ability of this board to do anything. It's giving the right of some other board, uh, from the town to make all those. Infinite decisions, and really, they need to look at it with a larger lens. With, um, a long-term lens, and we need to get down to the fine part when it comes forward. You know, we have these programs, these are budget numbers that are placeholders on a worksheet. That says, this is how, this is what we anticipate spending a year from now. But it isn't money that we have, uh. Spent or encumbered or, or anything like that at this point. And I, you know, I see it differently, I guess.
Fred, I think this could be, uh, helped along a little bit if we started the CPA funding process. Further, back in June or July sometime.
Yes. Uh, I, I'm, wanted to put this together so that we were looking ahead a year from now. As to what we might be doing, and it was something that we did talk about in the summer. In terms of planning and such, we started talking about the CPA, my notes say that we did it at the August meeting. Uh, unfortunately, we had a technical problem in September. Uh, we did meet in in October, we had another problem, which was my fault in terms of posting for November. Uh, so we were kind, we've been kind of behind the eight ball in terms of being able to. Meet appropriately and uh discuss these items. This is a budget that we should have been looking at last summer, but it's kind of hard at that point when we just was or awarded. The fiscal twenty three money to be looking at the money that would be spending in twenty four and twenty five. Um. Uh. We should have, yes, absolutely, we should, I I agree with Bill, we should have been looking at this earlier. Uh, we can be looking ahead a couple of years from now. Um, my feeling is that we can use this document as a. Guideline when we go forward and when we actually understand how much money. If any, the we have available.
I I think we should just make sure that the CPA, uh, the CPC committee. Understands that. We are not committing money to any of these projects, we we would like to be able, these are potential projects that we make. May um. Put money towards, but we should be very clear that these are not specific projects. That we want to commit money to, and that we just want this as, we don't want contingencies on any of this money.
Uh. We can try it.
Yeah, Bill, I don't know that they'll accept that.
I know. If. Yeah.
You know, I have some sympathy.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said in their shoes, I have some sympathy, even if the outcome I want is different.
Yeah.
Um, well. I don't know. What you want to do with this number, wh- whether you want to look at it again, uh, whether you think, well, we should have voted on it, but we didn't. Um. You know, uh, in terms of the hundred and forty thousand, uh, I understand that you don't have the information in front of you. Some of it is confidential because we don't own the building at this point. Uh, it becomes really difficult to put that out in a public meeting. Uh, where there, we don't have control of the building at this point.
Yeah, I think that might be something we should be talking with Chris. About how to do, because we can't, I mean, what we just did was. Not something we really should be doing, we can't be voting on large amounts of money without having financials that we're reviewing as a board, it's just bad governance. And and so there must be a workaround, we can't be the only board that's ever faced this. And I think Chris might be able to help us with the answers about how to set up that kind of a process.
That's great.
Um.
I agree with that. Yeah.
The rest, the information before the meeting. I don't know if that would be, uh, because we are bound by confiden- confidentiality, so. If we could have gotten the the information before the meeting, then we could discuss without reviewing what we're discussing, I don't know.
I I was sent the financials, I reviewed them, but I, and I asked specifically if I could share them. I was told that they would prefer that they not be shared publicly. And that they didn't want them to be widely distributed.
Yeah, but publicly, uh, as a board, we are bound by confidentiality and publicly doesn't mean us.
Well, I I think that if we were to send them as part of the packet, they would become public.
Okay.
Um.
Yes.
So. I, you know, I I apologize that you didn't, weren't able to see them, uh.
Yeah, let's. I don't, it's, I don't, I don't, I don't even, I'm not looking for you personally to make an apology, Fred, I'm looking. I just think that we need to know a little bit more how to set up that kind of a process well, because we. We can't be throwing around that kind of money without reviewing financials, and obviously. This is, there are legitimate reasons that not everything can be public and. And towns with, oh, you know, people who are governed by open meeting law. Still have to review those kinds of things, so we just need to find out how.
They put together a fairly extensive narrative for their request. And it was my hope that the information in there would be sufficiently deep. To be able to be assured to make a a decision. Uh, in hindsight, you know, I think they could have stripped off the totals, the the sum of the details. From the pro forma and just said, these are the gross numbers, so that you would have the gross numbers. In in that proposal, in hindsight, I think that's probably what they should have done. Um. I think that there is a precedent sometimes on this board for um. Not sharing things publicly, for instance. For our down payment assistance program, we require tax refunds, tax returns. From the people in order to uh. Ascertain their income. And our process in the past has been that the chairman and vice chairman, so that we have two people. Review those to make sure that they meet that, but those tax returns don't get shared. For obvious reasons.
But the difference there, right, is that the function you're doing is you're basically verifying information that they are making public. So the applicant is saying, I'm eligible for this, the document you're reviewing is a verification document, and then you are able to say, yes. We reviewed that and it is that. In, when we're looking at a financial investment with with a complicated financial picture, it's not a verification process. And that's why I think we should talk to Chris, ensure that processes exist, I'm sure we can just do them and. We, it won't have to be something that hinders our ability, it will actually enhance our ability to vote within with, from an informed. Fiduciary place.
I understand, and I I can um move that forward.
Thank you, um, I do have to go, I appreciate tonight's discussion, I'm glad we made the investment that we did.
Fred, we don't have an accountant, do we?
We do not have an accountant, we use Chris for everything. Uh, are there any other members of the board who have a comment? Um, I want to wrap up this meeting.
That's my comment, let's wrap it up.
Okay, Eileen Mooney has a hand up, uh, I'm gonna ask if she can speak.
I have three. Uh, I have two questions and one comment. Question one, did Joe method vote on?
Sure didn't.
I didn't, I didn't think I heard him.
Joe method left the meeting at seven oh seven.
Okay, all right, number two, I remember writing that something involving North Plain Road. Was conditional, I think the word was conditional. Upon up to twenty housing units. While you all were talking, I looked through past town meeting. Uh, records, but I couldn't find exact wording, I wondered if one of you might have remembered. It was involved with getting the funds, but I don't remember.
I just remember us throwing around the figure of fourteen to twenty and thought we'd, I personally thought we had settled on twenty.
I I remember an up to twenty, I remember typing that. Number three, and I'm sorry, Ananda isn't here to hear this. I think you really need to get in touch with the open meeting law. Because in its decision, it has given guidance to people with the same financial disclosure. Questions that were raised.
I can't hear anything.
Oh, I heard it.
I can hear.
Sorry, Bill.
Eileen says that the open meeting law has uh. Information about how to handle confidential documents.
And it's, it has given decisions saying this. And I strongly suggest that you speak to the open meeting law people, because this is not necessarily. Information that can be withheld. From the public.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, are there any other comments, James, let's see, allowed to talk. James eighty four.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening, this is James Garzone eighty four, North Plain Road, I just have one comment, last week, uh, Mr. Clark, you were before the CPC. They asked for the minutes and the vote of what you were uh. Were uh presenting, I just wanted to ask if that was given to the CPC, so they can make a decision next week, thank you.
Uh, the CPC CPA Committee. Asked for the minutes about the um. Discussions uh for the uh thing, those minutes were draft minutes and not official until they were voted on tonight. So having the minutes now voted on, they can be shared.
Thank you.
It could be shared as draft too.
Yeah.
Well, they weren't written until, they weren't written until Sunday.
Except that. According to town by law, minutes are also supposed to be written within thirty five, supposed to be posted draft.
Yes.
Whatever.
Eileen.
Thirty five days, okay, all right.
I submitted draft minutes right after the meeting that were a markup.
Okay.
In handwritten.
All right.
Twenty four hours later.
Yeah.
Posted by Jennifer Messina, there, they included the. And and they weren't the full narrative min- minutes.
Okay.
We hire, we have somebody who's a recorder.
Yeah.
Who has had some significant family issues. And um, we're trying to catch up with our minutes and we're doing pretty good, we're, we we have the October minutes approved now.
Fred, I'm actually very.
November minutes. November minutes, you know, approved, but uh, we're, 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 we're trying to catch up.
I think she's fine.
I did submit draft minutes uh in the form, and I will do so tomorrow. Uh. Uh, for this meeting, for the the notes, they're very simple. Anyway, um, I'd like uh uh to adjourn the meeting, uh, if I hear no other comments and without objection. Um, I'm gonna end the meeting, good night, everybody, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Good night.